The invocation this evening will be given by Michelle McCarty. Chief of Work, would you lead us in the pledge after that, please? Is it Michelle, is that correct?
Most loving and gracious God, we are humbled by your invitation to engage in the work of your kingdom-building among us and in this wonderful community. We acknowledge that we live in the greatest nation that has ever existed at the most wonderful time, and yet we know there are challenges to be a community and to be a people who live in union with you and one another. So we would ask that your Holy Spirit be poured upon this community now, this gathered group, that you may work in us and through us in powerful ways. Remind us that there is nothing impossible for you. Give us wisdom, eyes to see, ears to hear, as you hear and see, that we may have the courage to respond in greater, more merciful and more loving ways to continue to build up your wonderful kingdom on earth as it is in heaven. We ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Item four, consider approval of minutes of the regular meeting of January the 7th, 2014.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Ron, second by Mike. Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Under item five, awards, presentations, and organizational business. Item 5.1, present the pen available for adoption at the city animal shelter.
Jean Robertson, Metine Animal Patrol, and what I brought tonight is all the old men can mail mix, probably about three months old. We have the main to it out here. We have quite a few animals that leave the good home. So we've got adoption at the Facebook, and we could use a lot more people out. They're coming out in Gotham, hour between 10:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday, and 12:00 to 3:00 on Saturday and Sunday.
I'm thinking about it. Bring me those labs, Jean, we'll talk.
Thank you. Item 5.2, consider appointments to the Visual Arts Commission.
Mayor Commissioners, this is your newly formed Visual Arts Commission. It will consist of seven members. Six are from the public at large, and the mayor will appoint one commission member. We're very encouraged. This is probably the largest turnout in advisory committees I've seen in some time. There are ten applicants. Again, you'll vote for six, and I'm gonna call each of the applicants by name and offer you the opportunity for 60 seconds or less of time if you wish to speak to the commission about why, if you're inclined. So first, Eldon Ames. If you wish to speak to the commission, please step up here at the podium and offer your thoughts, sir.
I read the article last month, thought with all my experience and education, 30 years in public schools, five years at Phillips University, and numerous art projects in the community, I thought this is a good way that I can help my community.
Thank you, Mr. Ames. Edna Mae Holden.
Thank you. I'd just like this opportunity to, I kind of badgered most of you about this, and I appreciate so much Whitney Box working on this for so long, and I'd like to be a part of it. I think lots of great things are happening in Enid, and I think this can carry forward through the Visual Arts Committee and keep Enid beautiful and all the other things we're doing. So I'd like very much to bring what little expertise I have in this area to this board.
I don't see him, but Mike Clemmie. Mike told me that he would not be able to attend tonight, and if I say this wrong, please indulge me. Margaret Moss-Hilligoss? Did I say that right?
Yes. I've been involved in the arts in Enid since the '60s, when I was a student at Phillips University. And I exhibited my paintings for the first time in the administration building. Unfortunately, now, the walls out there are bare. It saddens me. I've run a gallery at Park Avenue Thrift Store for the emerging artist for six years, which we collected the children's art from the public schools and the 4H and the library. And I'm a quilter, and I appreciate the heritage that Enid has in textile arts, specifically quilts. They have a strong connection to abstract art, and they have a strong connection to our history, our stories, and our perseverance. And I think those are artistic qualities exhibited in what we called folk art when I was in college.
Robert Taylor Jr. Lindy Funk.
I'm Lindy Funk, and we've lived here for about 13 years now, and we call Enid home, and we'll be home for quite a while. And for the past six years of my life, I've been building the self-esteem of young people through the editing and the writing and photography of the E-Kids magazine, which I've stepped away from. So I was looking for a variety of different things, you know, where would I fit in? And with an art degree, I felt that when I saw this in the paper, I thought, wow, you know, I think this is great. I think it's, I think people should be commended for having come up with this idea and how to fund it. I think there's other funding out there that should they decide, the committee decide to research other funds to make those amounts of money that were given grow. I think there's a variety of art that can be displayed in a variety of different ways. And art makes people feel good. Sometimes we don't know that's what makes us feel good, maybe just the colors of your room, but it's what makes you feel good, and it can help improve the quality of life. Thank you.
Cheryl Jones. Dolores McClure. Christopher Sneed.
Christopher would like me to speak on his behalf, is that okay? He can't be here.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up, Kelly, you had two times the podium. Are you speaking again for who, Kelly?
For Christopher Sneed. He has a history in painting and visual arts, visiting museums around the US, and is excited to see it come to Enid. He's looking to make people more interested in the arts. Can I personally vouch for him at all? Or I'll just sit down?
Don't go anywhere. Stay put. You're next, Kelly.
Oh, okay. I've always been an artist, and I just can't wait to see more vibrance in Enid, of course, particularly downtown, that's where my focus is, but having vibrant art and creativity around you is good for tourism, it's good for workforce. People want to be surrounded by creativity, and that's, it can make a difference on where they travel and where they decide to live. So I'd love to be part of it. Thank you.
That's all the applicants, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. There are 10. Again, you will vote for six, and Sonia Key will collect and tabulate the ballots.
When we turn in the ballots, we'll continue our agenda until I have time to check. Please vote for six. Item six, hearings. Item 6.1, there are none. Item seven, community development. Item 7.1, there are none. Under item eight, administration. 8.1, consider an ordinance amending the Enid Municipal Code 2003, Title V, entitled Public Safety, Chapter VII, entitled Animal Control, Section 5-7-5, to exclude from prosecution the taking in of a feral animal solely for the purpose of spaying or neutering and vaccinating and releasing the animal in the location in which it was found. Further, to correct grammatical errors and move from a class system of offenses to specific fines and imprisonment, providing for repealer, savings clause, severability, codification. Andrea?
Mayor Commissioners, this is the ordinance that was requested by the commission, and it essentially just decriminalizes the act of taking in a feral animal, having it spayed or neutered, getting it shot, and then releasing it back to where it was found. So then, anyone who does this, and there are some people in town that do this now, will no longer be subject to a penalty.
I move we approve.
Motion by Tammy, second by Mike. Further discussion?
I'm sorry, yes, there is. We have one applicant. And when I call your name, if you'd step to the microphone, give your name and your physical address. Sally Cook. Very well.
I have an interest in it.
Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Item 8.2, consider an ordinance amending the Enid Municipal Code 2003, Title III, entitled Business and License Regulations, Chapter II, entitled Alcoholic Beverages, Sections 3-2-9 through 3-2-10, to prohibit furnishing of alcohol to minors and possession or consumption of alcohol by minors within the city of Enid city limits, and to allow the Enid Police Department discretion and control over consumption of alcohol by minors when necessary. Further, to update in accordance with state law, correct grammatical errors, and move from a class system of offenses to specific fines and imprisonment, providing for repealer, savings clause, severability, and codification.
I move to approve.
Motion by Ben.
I'll second.
Second by David. Further discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Item 8.3, consider an ordinance amending the Enid Municipal Code 2003, Title VI, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter II, currently entitled Administration and Enforcement, Sections 6-2-6 through 6-2-7, to describe authority of police officers in the traffic setting within the city of Enid city limits. Further, to update in accordance with state law, correct grammatical errors, and move from a class system of offenses to specific fines and imprisonment, providing for repealer, savings clause, severability, and codification.
Mayor Commissioners, this ordinance is primarily written to do two things. One is just to add the language plus cost to the criminal, or to the crime of obedience to persons authorized to direct traffic or a violation of. The second thing is to increase the penalty for eluding a police officer from $500 to $750, and that's the maximum fine, not necessarily the prescribed fine, and then adding the language plus cost.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ben, a second by Rodney. Further discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Got some tied votes, do we?
We have a runoff, but we have four, and then we'll have a runoff of three at all times. Four, fifth, sixth, and fifth and sixth. The four with the most votes were Edna Mae Holden, Mike Clemmie, Lindy Funk, and Kelly Tompkins.
Should we look for two more?
We will, yeah. The, we will vote for Eldon Ames, or Cheryl Jones, or Christopher Sneed. They tied.
Vote for one, two.
Voting for two.
Again, that's Eldon Ames, Cheryl Jones, Christopher Sneed. And my appointment will be Tammy Wilson. It was a close race.
It was a close race, but you won.
Before we go to 8.4.
During this process, Mr. Mayor, if I could get a clarification from some folks who have signed up, and I believe you may have signed up to speak for the issue of the Visual Arts Commission, I just want to make sure that you haven't signed up for something. Lindy, was that all you were signing up for? Okay, that's what I thought. And Watermelon, you signed up, but you didn't indicate what you were speaking to. I'm assuming it's the 8.4, the Pegasus discussion? Okay. And Ms. Moss has departed, so, no, you, you don't, on your art, I'm assuming it was for the discussion we've just completed. Okay, thank you.
The two names to round out the six are Eldon Ames and Christopher Sneed. Item 8.4, consider a resolution terminating the contract for public educational and government access services between the City of Enid, Oklahoma, and Pegasus Incorporated, and the lease agreement between the City of Enid, the Enid Municipal Authority, and Sutton Link. Andrea?
Mayor Commissioners, this resolution is brought tonight at Commissioner Van Hoosier's request. It would, if approved, it would terminate the lease agreement that the City of Enid and the Enid Municipal Authority has with Sutton Link as to the beneficiary, Pegasus. It would also terminate the funding agreement between the City of Enid and Pegasus. It would withdraw the offer, or not the offer, but withdraw the approval of the City of Commission to spend up to $240,000 for relocation expenses. It would allow the City of Enid to temporarily have the Public Relations Department take over the three PEG channels without changing any programming, just on a temporary basis before or until another provider can be put in place. It provides for a severance package for the executive director of Pegasus if the executive director is removed as a result of this. This resolution itself does not actually dissolve Pegasus because Pegasus is a separate corporation, but there is a possibility that the executive director may no longer be there, and so this would take care of a severance package for her.
Say that again, please.
I said, this resolution itself does not dissolve Pegasus because Pegasus is a separate corporation. It defunds Pegasus, but in the event that the executive director were to lose her job because of this, this would allow for a severance package from the City of Enid to her. It also provides that a seven-member public access television advisory board would be created, and that ordinance would be written and codified at a later date. The City, it directs the City of Manager to seek and make recommendations to the mayor and Board of Commissioners regarding lease options and space to continue the current option, or operations of the Pegasus programming. It also directs the City Manager to offer employment to the Pegasus current operations and programming directors within the Public Relations Department of the City of Enid, and it directs the City Manager to remain, or to transfer the remaining 2013-2014 budget allocation for Pegasus to the budget of the Public Relations Department to be used solely for the purpose of providing public educational and government access services. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Andrea, one question I've got is that it mentions here in the resolution that there was a discussion about Pegasus during the budget hearings back in May. I do not recollect that there was any kind of vote taken in connection with that discussion.
I'm not aware, I don't think so. There was not a vote, but there was a discussion, yes.
Discussion, so there was no, really any action taken on the part of the commission at that time?
The commission voted to go ahead and fund Pegasus at that time?
Yes, okay.
And at the time that we voted, it might have, I don't remember if it was in May or if it was in June, but I remember around that, because I looked at the minutes. Wasn't it, wasn't there a vote taken wherein we discussed revisiting this in six months, which is now? And that was, that was? Yes, yes. Because I wanted a year, and we got, and it was voted on six months. Yes, and not just Pegasus, but other programs, yes, yes.
While we're talking about that, as a result of that discussion, did, were the Pegasus Board Chairman or Manager given any kind of notice in writing about what the commission wanted to accomplish with that program?
Well, I'm unaware of any writing, but that's because I didn't draft any, and I'm not aware of what any of the other commissioners made.
Since the director was in the audience during that discussion, Commissioner, I thought that was self-evident.
Well, not really.
Well, I can tell you that in email from myself to Wendy in March of last year, I lined out what we wanted, and that was in March.
But Tammy, that has no effect.
I'm saying, I'm saying, no, I'm saying that they, this, that they weren't aware of our desires as far as almost a year ago.
Well, let me preface that, then. What we need to be concerned with tonight is, we have a lot to be concerned with tonight. My, here's one thing I'd like addressed from Andrea, and then, and then maybe David. How do we invalidate this contract? It appears that what we are attempting to say is that Pegasus has failed to perform under the terms of their contract, and so for cause, we are voiding the contract. I've seen no evidence whatsoever under the terms of the contract that they have failed to perform, and what any one of us, be it David, or Tammy, or myself, says via email, walking down the street, doesn't have that kind of legal effect. It's action of the commission. So what have they breached? And how do we rise to the level of a violation of the terms of their contract to invalidate it?
And you're talking about the funding contract, correct? Not the lease agreement?
Let's do one at a time, but sure.
Okay, funding contract. It does not define cause. It says that the contract can be terminated for cause. It does not define cause. Therefore, it is up to this commission to determine whether or not cause has taken place, not necessarily by an action, a direct violation in, or by an action which directly violates what the commission has asked Pegasus or told Pegasus to do, but in general, is there cause to terminate this contract? Have they performed up to the expectations as outlined in the contract for the City of Enid? If this commission feels like that cause has been met, then that contract can be terminated. Is it subject to suit in district court? Absolutely. Almost anything is. And if a judge later decided that the commission was incorrect and did not have cause, it could reverse that. Not permanently, because the city has no continuing duty to fund Pegasus, but at least short term, until the end of the budget cycle, the court could re.
So we would be deciding tonight, if this resolution was passed, we'd be making the declaration unilaterally that Pegasus has failed to comply with the terms of the agreement without specifying those failures. Is that correct? Because I see nowhere in this resolution what those specific failures are.
The cause, tell us what the cause is.
Well, the commissioners have to determine what cause is, not me. This is not my, my thing. This is, I have no opinion on this, but the commissioners have to decide. Has Pegasus lived up to your responsibilities as outlined in the contract?
Then we need to discuss that.
Well, and I certainly.
Those things do need to be discussed, absolutely, and I would ask that if a motion is made tonight to pass this resolution, that the motion is made with the notation that these are the specific things that the commission as a whole feels like Pegasus has or has not done. That way, if in fact legal action is pursued, then there is a legislative determination by this commission going into the district court that generally a district court will not overturn. Generally, not always, but generally.
Well, one of the things that I was trying to get at is the fact that we renewed a contract with them after the beginning of this fiscal year, or this fiscal year.
Yes, yes.
And there was no mention in that contract of any lack of compliance or anything that we wanted to do differently than what they had been doing?
There was not.
No benchmarks?
And, you know, to me, if, if we're going to say, well, you know, you failed to do what we want you to do, we need to tell them what we want them to do.
Exactly. We did have this discussion, and we told them that we would revisit it in six months, which is what we're doing now.
Various people had the discussion.
No, we had this public discussion. It was a very public discussion, and we said that, because I wanted to give them a year, and I got voted down, and it was voted down to six months, which is now. And when I was speaking of earlier, I'm not purporting that what I said to them had any violation to do with the contract, I'm just speaking to the fact that there was some notice prior to the last couple of weeks, is all I'm getting at, as far as that goes. But we did have a public discussion, it was, and we set a benchmark to review it again in six months.
But don't you agree, though, that that should have been entered into the contract?
Well, I don't know. I know it's in our minutes that we voted on it. We voted on the fact that we were going to discuss it again in six months, and that's what we're doing.
I remember David.
Is that in the minutes?
Yes, it is in the minutes.
I remember David saying that they, we would ask them to raise half of the revenue outside source.
But that wasn't voted on.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
That's the only thing that I have heard that was a cause that they haven't lived up to.
Several commissioners have mentioned what they Several Commissioners have mentioned what they believe to be cause. For example, Commissioner Wilson has visited, as far as I know, with Pegasus a few times, told them things that the Commission probably, or wanted them to do, as discussed in the budget meetings last year. And I believe that she's unsatisfied. I don't know that for a fact, but I believe that she's unsatisfied. Saying thank you for Commissioner Van Hooser.
Can we hear what those items are, since they're not included in this resolution?
Before we do that, I haven't heard a whole lot of dialogue between the City and Pegasus. Sorry.
I also don't know that, I think that, Mr. Mayor, the suggestion that Pegasus raised half of their funding was made by a Commissioner but never voted on by this body as a whole. Pegasus is a public access organization and I think that the idea that they could raise even half of their operating funds is frankly ludicrous while still acting within the stated goals of a public access.
Well, if you turn it over-
We never voted on that, although again, Mr. Van Hooser did express that wish.
That's the cause I see. But if it goes, is turned over to the City of Enid, are they going to be asked to raise half of the revenue from an outside, half of the revenue from the outside source? The City of Enid?
The City's already funding all of it. We're, we're their sole-
I'm talking about over and above the higher $85,000. If we ask them, my question is, if we had asked them to raise half of their revenue from an outside source, if we, if it inures to the City of Enid, are we going to ask the City of Enid to go out and raise half of their revenue? If not, that's a cause they didn't live up to and then we've got the same problem again.
Mayor, that's a decision to be made by this Commission. I can't answer that because no-
Can the City of Enid go outside of the budget and raise revenue from a private source?
Sure, yes.
What if they don't raise the revenue?
The City of Enid?
Yes, ma'am.
You're assuming or you're not, Mr. Mayor, that you're applying that standard to a court of circumstance? If you in fact tell the City of Enid, if, if this motion is approved tonight and you add on to that the stipulation that the new entity that manages Pegasus would be required to raise additional funds, if you make that an element of this motion, then yes, that would, the same standard would apply. But that's several horses down the road.
What do we do with the existing Pegasus Board?
The Pegasus Board would remain intact. The Pegasus is its own corporation. It would decide, its own Board would decide what to do.
Shouldn't we let them make that decision?
They would make that decision. This resolution would not fix that.
Granted, we control the purse strings. It all comes from the City of Enid, but-
Yes.
Looks to me like we are going around the Pegasus Board. Why would you want to be on the Pegasus Board then?
Well, there wouldn't be anything to Pegasus at that point. The way this is written, all the assets would be co-opted by the City of Enid Public Relations Department, which totally removes the whole point of a public access organization. I mean, a PEG, the stated goal of a PEG isn't to do PR for the city. That's not what a PEG's there for.
You raise a great point, Commissioner, and if I could address that, there has never been expressed or implied that this would be a permanent subset of the City of Enid. It is a temporary measure to maintain the integrity of the operation and the conduct of the current Pegasus mechanism. A little history here might, might be in order. This will be my eighth budget cycle and in every single one of them, this issue is addressed. And we always stop short of saying, speaking to the elephant in the room. And the fact is, Pegasus does not perform in its current operational style. The entity that is Pegasus is not the issue. The fact that it currently does not operate in a manner that, that is even a modest return on its investment, that issue has been expressed by four previous City Commissions. This city commission has stepped forward and said, "We want a decision on that." Commissioner Van Hooser was, I no doubt, will speak to that. But the elephant in the room is, is the fact that they're not fulfilling their obligation in their own charter.
Well, but Eric, the time to address that is when we do our budget. We made a commitment, the City of Enid made a commitment to fund Pegasus for one calendar year. We talked about revisiting it in six months-
Which is now.
But that's, but that's not the commitment we made on paper.
Yes, we did, we voted on it.
We signed a contract. We signed a contract which stated one year. Now, revisiting Pegasus is not the same thing as defunding Pegasus. And making recommendations to Pegasus to improve the, improve what they do is entirely separate thing from defunding it. Also, keep in mind that in the last six months, we evicted them and put them in the awkward position of trying to find a workable solution in a temporary home while they did renovations for permanent homes, which, all of which takes time. This is absolutely the worst time to be pulling the rug out from under them with effectively a few weeks' notice.
They have had longer than a few weeks' notice because they came to us in March of last year before you were on the Commission with plans for their renovations. So they knew this was coming a way long time before the last six months.
And Tammy, we know how long construction takes.
I'm just saying, this is not new. This is not something that's been sprung on them in the last couple of weeks. This has been an ongoing deal for years and the fact that we raised concerns a year ago is this did not happen in two, this did not happen two weeks ago.
But the threat to defund did.
No, it didn't. It's been going on every single year and they'll tell you, we've been here every single year. We've had this discussion every single year. They've had this discussion every time.
And we have signed a contract every time.
And the last time we did it, we said, with the exception that in six months, we're going to look at this again.
I just don't think the City of Enid breaches agreements. I think it's unethical.
Well, I think that we voted on the fact that we were going to look at it again in six months. That was an action that this body took.
It's a written contract.
And that was a vote, a legal vote.
With all due respect, if, if cause is in fact determined, then it's terminable for cause and it's not a breach of the contract. I mean, again, it's up to the Commission to decide, but termination for cause is not a breach of the contract.
One question I have for you, Andrea, that is that the, the contract calls for the City to provide studio space for Pegasus, isn't that correct?
A separate contract provides for studio space.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, you know, what, what effort did we make to do that? It sounds to me like we kind of turned that over to Pegasus to find their own space.
Commissioner Johnson, I, I feel like several of you are asking questions that I can't answer. I can give you, um-
Okay, well, I mean, you just happen to be the one that's standing.
I understand that, but I made suggestions. I talked to Erica about suggestions for other places they could go.
I had several meetings with the Pegasus Executive Director and potential landlords and I, I asked them to lead the effort because I didn't want the City to be identified as forcing them into a spot. We didn't as much evict them as we tore the building down they were in.
Hey, but we, we do have the right to force them into a spot, don't we?
We, we could, but I, I deferred to Pegasus leadership to define their own future existence and we set a money value that we would support. You, you codified that in the Commission vote. They determined their new home would be in the nonprofit center. And, and you gave them $240,000 to accomplish it.
Yep. We, it would, you know, I, I was thinking though, of course, I, I realize that the destruction of the, of the convention or the conference center was something we really didn't decide until not, not too many months ago. I mean, we, we knew that eventually it probably would go away, but I think the actual decision that it was going to come down was made, not, not a great long time ago.
But they knew way before that that they were going to be moving out of that building because it was March when they came to us last time. And in March, I said at the time, and yes, we approved that money, but I said at the time that I will be glad to support your cause, I will be glad to support giving you that money, however, these are the things that I want to see happen in order to maintain my support for your entity. And those things have not happened, in my opinion. And according to the board member that's on the Pegasus Board have not happened.
I haven't heard a, a single person say that they, they are in favor of, of the way it's operating right now. They, they like what's going on, they like everything about it. All I'm hearing is the, the breach of contract. And if we find that they are not performing to, to what we think they should perform, I don't know that that is a breach of contract. I think that's cause.
Disliking them and failing to perform are not the same thing.
But their failure to perform does not mean that-
Failure to perform is a higher, failure to perform is a higher standard than we're not particularly thrilled with them. I, I don't want to equate the two.
How about, we're not particularly thrilled with them because they're failing to perform. That's the bottom line.
I think-
And the bottom line is, it doesn't mean that we dislike them, it means it's a business decision. They're asking us to dump a quarter of a million dollars into a building that we don't own-
And we committed to.
And we said we would revisit in six months.
No, we did not.
Yes, we did, we voted on it, it's in the minutes.
But we made the commitment to spend the money.
And said that we would look at it in.
That's our ability to not.
Similarly, you committed to, to fund some street repairs that we subsequently moved out into another funding line, Commissioner. So it, it is, it is a fundamental decision of this council to determine funding decisions. They change here all year long. The distinction in this one is that you refer to a contract. The contract was something that we developed here because it didn't exist prior to that. And it was a element of performance that we expected them to achieve. Your point is well-taken.
But Eric, they've been-
This council did commit to this.
They have been behaving in good faith as if that money was there and they would have funding for operations for one year and funding to renovate. They have been acting in good faith along those lines. It takes time to renovate.
There's $400,000 in their account, they haven't been short of money.
And throwing money at a problem does not necessarily mean that it moves faster.
But that's what we've been doing for years.
They have been contracting with architects.
We have been putting a Band-Aid on a bleeding wound every single year.
They've been contracting with architects, they have been working with a general contractor. We all know how long construction takes. This body up here has experienced that time after time.
Nobody's asking or expecting their stuff to be done by now, as far as their building goes. That's not the issue. The issue's not that their building isn't done. The issue is that they have not performed up to what we expected.
And what, can you be more specific? I'm, I'm, I still haven't heard these, what these performance issues are. I understand they haven't raised a lot of money, but what, what else? There'll be some other things besides that.
Well, the thing, I mean, my biggest issue was, and I asked, I said, you know, I would be in support of, you know, keeping, maintaining this if you would, you know, if Pegasus could become a little bit more proactive in their fundraising efforts, in their community, you know, being out in the community more, educating people more about what they're doing. And, you know, we talked about, you know, they have different ways that they could raise some of their revenue. Right now, they're solely reliant on the City of Enid. That's it. And there are other ways that they could be doing that and they're not doing that at all. I mean, a comment was made one time about, you know, I mean, they live within a certain amount of money and they don't ever think outside of like, how can we get more money?
So is the money.
And to me, I feel like they should be a little bit proactive in that instead of us just giving them money every year to keep doing what they're doing.
Isn't this kind of the nuclear option to respond to that, Tammy? It's not, here's our suggestions at six months, it's, you're gone, we're taking all your stuff and your money.
But it's not a new suggestion is the point. This has been every single year, this is-
Kind of a dramatic option. David's been making notes over there and I'm really curious to make that. I've just been scratching to write a speech.
One option is we could just not fund it at all.
To me, they are a nonprofit organization and I think that entity needs to be housed in a nonprofit center. Whether, whoever.
At our cost.
Sure. You, you're talking about $240,000, but you've got to subtract off what it's going to cost to find the building, renovate the building and move them and I think it will cost more than $100,000.
Not to mention-
And your bu, your budget is not going to change from what David gave us because you're still going to have salaries, you're still going, you're just moving one salary here, you're moving it over here and the expenses, I think, will be very similar to what they are right now.
Even if they are, it's not our building and not someone else's building.
I hear you.
It'll make sense to spend $240,000 in someone else's building that you might not be there next year.
What I'm saying is that $240,000 is the max that we're going to give them, but we're going to have to replace, we're going to have to spend another $140,000, $100,000 to begin with to move them.
If we say up to $240,000-
Well, you say no, but-
That's it.
You know, they're going to spend $240,000.
Pardon me?
But if we, if we say you have up to $240,000, they're going to spend every bit of $240,000.
David's example was, it'll cost us about $100,000 to find a home that we own or lease.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can give you an option that'll cost you nothing. In our, the Enid Event Center, we have, we have a space there that was considered and rejected by the Pegasus Executive Director. We can house them today for free.
First time I've heard that.
Well, you asked the question, that's why I answered.
That's what I wanted to hear. There's not enough dialogue between the City of Enid and Pegasus.
And isn't that a Pegasus Board of Directors decision, not the City's? We fund them, but Pegasus Board of Directors manages their operations. That's how organizations are set up.
The money's still coming out?
Sure, absolutely.
We should have a little say in what's going on.
We can say, okay, we're going to continue giving you this money, but you have to live here. Or we can say, you can be completely autonomous and do whatever you want, we're not giving you any more money. That's the option.
What other thing to say? We, and I don't know whether the newspaper's right or not, Bartlesville, what does Bartlesville, Stillwater and Norman know that we don't know in Enid, Oklahoma? They have shut theirs down in one of the instances and gone to nothing but the City Council and the City Council's State Session big on their Pegasus, on their PEG.
And I think we're trying to avoid that. We don't want to shut them down.
That's the biggest distance.
That didn't answer my question. What do they know that we don't know?
They know it's a money pit.
Mr. Mayor, I, I obviously have several things to say. I've, I've had some prepared comments that I've practiced that takes about eight and a half minutes. So I've been real quiet so I can say all my-
You've been great.
All my, all my time up to client, what I would like to suggest is that, that we hear from the people who have signed up and then before we finish the discussion, obviously, I'm going to make a motion that we accept this resolution. And so I'll make that motion now and then I'd like to reserve my comments for the end.
At, at point of order, you have a motion.
I'll second.
We'll have to have a second before we move on.
A second, a second.
Second by Rodney.
May I say thank you, Andrea? You took a lot of the lightning bolts that should have been directed at me and I appreciate that. This was not your idea, I put you on this and thank you.
I appreciate what David did in doing the research and looking into it and I appointed him to the Pegasus Board. No one else up here made that appointment. David, thank you for looking into it.
Sure.
Eric?
Let me remind you, as you step to the podium, please give a physical address as for the record, there's a reason why we seek that. And some of you have signed up for items that I presume are item 8.4. So if I ask you to clarify, that's simply that reason. Jerry Kunkel.
I want to defer my time to Mr. McHale.
Dennis Stone.
Pegasus 8.4.
Okay, this is your opportunity to speak to that. Step to the mic, give us your address and phone number.
Dennis Stone, 701 West Oak, 5404253. I know, okay. I pay $4.81 per month in a franchise fee to Suddenlink Communications, which is what funds Pegasus. Okay? Suddenlink will not take that franchise fee off my bill if you all assume control of Pegasus. I'm on the phone with them today on that. Find out definitely the situation. Okay. I received three services from Suddenlink, so if you, and I watch Pegasus. If this Commission officially initiates its hostile takeover of Pegasus to use as a tool for the City of Enid propaganda machine, I will be forced to support the City of Enid propaganda office or change services at a cost to me. So I'd like to know if the City's going to do for people that do not support the propaganda of the City of Enid on this Pegasus ordeal, what are they going to do for the people that have changed services at a cost of the citizen?
Thank you.
Watermelon Campbell. And Watermelon, I need your address as well.
First of all, I think everybody pretty much knows me. I'm the Executive Director of the Railroad Museum of Oklahoma and I've been 26 years together.
Watermelon, can I get your address, please? Can I get your, your home address, please?
2502 Indian Drive, Enid, Oklahoma. I have people come to the museum every day and I hear them talk and they talk to me. And I've not heard anybody that goes along with you folks' program taking over Pegasus. Pegasus, most people in the City of Enid that watches Pegasus are, likes what they see, like what- see, like what they're doing, likes what's going on with them. And they don't want the city of Enid to take over Pegasus. Now, um, that's what I hear from the people. Uh, if necessary, I can get up a petition, get you three, four thousand signatures if that's what you want. But I, uh, I, I just believe that, uh, that Pegasus is doing a good job. I listen at them all the time. I listen at the city commission on Pegasus all the time. And I like what they're doing. And I hear discussion of that every day. And the people I talk to in the city of Enid, I've not heard one person that likes what the city's doing taking over Pegasus. That's really what I have to say here. Uh, and I asked a question today at a meeting that we had. And, uh, uh, it was discussed that they were going to, they were going to have a study session that would last about three months, uh, all about the situation. And, um, yeah, the comment was made that they wanted to, the, the, they wanted to appoint some, uh, people that were executives. Or prominent people or something, uh, to, uh, to form a committee and examine this situation. And I asked the question, who are these prominent people? And I didn't get no answer. Who's going to do the appointing of the committee that's going to study this situation? It's kind of stopped right there. But, uh, I, I, I am a prominent person in Enid. In fact, it has been, it says so on the plaque. Whenever, whenever I was given the privilege of being the number one person of city of Enid, and they made a plaque to that effect. Uh, and the next year, they said the same thing. And, uh-
You're, you're kind of get, we, we understand that you're getting off the subject.
What I'm saying is that, that, um, if you want somebody, we want somebody that would be on both sides of the situation. If somebody's going to be appointed to, to do this so they can do it all fair and not just one-sided. And I think the, uh, people in Enid that reads what's coming out in the paper, making decisions and so forth, in, in, in this. And of course, the church comes into the situation. But I understand that Pegasus operates under a five oh one C three program. So does the Railroad Museum of Oklahoma. And I come across problems with that every day. And I can tell you all about five oh one C three. But I, I just wanted to emphasize here, see, what's going on amongst the people. And I think the people in Enid should be the deciding on whether the city is going to take over Pegasus, up all the employees. I, I think they've done a great job. And I just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you very much.
William B. Maxwell.
Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I'll make the same caveat that I-
Need your address.
Sorry, William B. Maxwell, two oh five West Maple, suite one oh two, seven three seven oh one.
Thank you.
On number two three three, nine four four four. It's also the fax line. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, as I've already indicated in my letter to the city, I don't speak for the board. I am a board member. I agree with what's been said so far that the board, the commission speaks for itself. Council members, mayor, city clerk, city attorney, don't speak for the city of Enid. Open meeting, proper agenda, majority vote, that's what, when the city of Enid speaks. So although these are my comment, comments, I'll try to keep them as close as I can to the subject and to what I think the board would wish. Um, a lot of misinformation in regard to this matter. The city of Enid destroyed the building in which Pegasus is housed without a plan on relocating it. As I understand it, the city of Enid currently plans to destroy some portion of the management. It's not the management, it's the board. Some portion of the employment. Seems to be some disunderstand, misunderstanding about that. The resolution clearly makes it paragraph six that the city manager would be directed to offer employment to Pegasus' current operations and programming directors. That's two out of three. Hence, the city manager is given option as a part of the resolution that's on the floor that the executive director would be fired. So to say that the executive director isn't the focus of this, this entire episode is ludicrous. Now, otherwise, the board of Pegasus does not manage Pegasus. The board of Pegasus is not paid. As I understand it, ladies and gentlemen, you're not paid either. Now, if this board offered an edict in its budget session this year that each one of you is to go out and raise ninety thousand dollars, I don't think you could do it. Now, maybe you're better at fundraising than, no, I'm sure you'd be better at fundraising than I. But the issue is, is that what's Pegasus is about? To raise funds? Or are we to provide public education, government access television? Now, we can agree on several things. Pegasus has got to get better. We can agree, I think, that Pegasus alone cannot make it better. Can you make it better? I don't think any one of you wants to take on that task. Each of you has your own specialties, your own occupation. I do. I don't have the expertise to do that. So we need someone, I say we in the, in the collective sense of your body and the body that I'm speaking about at least, and again, not for, that we need some expertise. Experts have come forward and are offering to do that. Now the question is, are you going to appoint those or is Pegasus? Are you going to offer new management to Pegasus with no continuity with the old management? The experts that I've talked to are willing to offer their services to come in and provide assistance, want the current executive director to stay on a period of time so that management can still manage of the day-to-day affairs while new leadership directions are established. This is simple, basic business. Now, we've got to have place. If we're going to have anybody to loan us money, give us money, they're going to have to think that we have a home. We're homeless right now. Now, do you want to give some money to a homeless person? I don't think you do. You're stumbling over two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And, and I think Commissioner Stubber, I got to disagree with you slightly, we're not going to spend two hundred and forty thousand dollars if we go into the nonprofit center. We're going to spend two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We've cut and we've honed and we've robbed and stolen and everything we can to get the money down. We, quite frankly, and I believe I speak for the board in this particular context, do not want to be in the nonprofit center. If we could be in the event center, I've never heard of that. The board members who are here tonight have never heard of that. If Dr. Van Hooser has the list or anybody has the list on where we could be other than that, please submit it to us. The failure of communication between these two bodies is rampant. The communication that has been misinformation is worse than the failure to communicate. And those are two different things. But what I'm suggesting is that if you're going to take an organization down, and the words came from the, from your city attorney's whip mouth, that this is a takeover, then do you want to destroy the continuity? Do you want to destroy the continuity of the organization because you don't believe in the board, you don't believe in the employees? Fine, do that. You'll have no continuity, no experience to offer. But it would seem your history is to destroy a building and then decide what you're going to do with the contents, the occupants, Pegasus. Now you want to destroy an organization, Pegasus, you're going to keep the name. You can have the name. Wouldn't it have been simpler to have gone to the Pegasus Board in a, in a resolution from this body to say, y'all ain't doing your job. Resign. Mr. Mayor, if you want my resignation tonight and you want to pack the board, Pegasus, and take off with the same management and the same bylaws, rules, organization, everything we've got, you can have my organization. I'm sorry, my resignation. We are not wed to the board. We're not trying to hang on. Our salary is not going to be increased if we get to stay. But I think that we have some continuity. There is some continuity within the employees by implicit within the resolution. Now, Mr. Tim mentioned, Commissioner Tim mentioned that we have four hundred thousand dollars. Yes. And we have delayed switching over to HD. The promise for that has been made over and over again, and that's very true. And while that's been delayed, the price of HD equipment has dropped immensely. So are we bad stewards of the money that has been given to us? Or are we good stewards? We haven't spent that money. So if, if it were for cause that we were frittering about funds that the city gave us, hang us. Hang us all by the same tree. We have not been bad stewards. If you want us to go out and raise funds, then we need to have a fundraiser person. Want us to manage Pegasus and make it better? Let us find some experts to advise us. Give you the report so there's no misinformation about it whatsoever. And if you don't like the report, or we don't like the report, one of us is going to have the opportunity to veto that report and say, no, we're not going in that direction. And about that time, you're going to be at budget. And you can cut us off. And you'll pick up four hundred thousand dollars. And you'll save two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And you'll save the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars the next year. I don't think this is about money. I think this is about, do you want to have a public education governmental access station in Enid? Does it need to be better? Don't we all agree that it needs to be better? Who's going to tell us how to make it better? Are you going to? It's not going to be me. I want to turn to some experts. Who's going to point the experts? Now, I think the timing is bad. I asked Dr. Van Hooser today why the timing is so essential now. I don't understand. I hope that you do. Because at this point in time, you're going to control what happens to this organization as of February one. You're not going to control the board because the board's still going to be out there as some sort of amorphous nothing. And you can do that. If that's the way you feel, fine. But I really do agree with Mr. Azell. If we've done a bad job, I'd like you to tell us how we have done a bad job. Who among us has done a bad job? Was it a prior board president? Is it a current board president? Is, who is it that you are unhappy with? I think that's only common decency. And so far, I haven't heard that. So my suggestion to the board, to the commission, is that you table this, give us ninety days to come up with an expert, uh, report, to submit that to you, that you allow us to select the members of that expert panel. You have veto power over any member we select on that panel. They will provide us that report, meaning us to you and to Pegasus Board within ninety days. And if we can't agree then on the future of Pegasus, we're going to be at budget. You're going to cut the funding. You're going to make some money. You're going to have a tax return to file. You're going to have a whole bunch of people whose tax returns you're going to have to change. But if that's what you want to do, you have the power to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Maxwell?
Thank you. We cannot respond. We cannot respond to this night hearing.
I'd be happy to respond to any question that there-
Can we respond, Andrew? Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
Under your suggestion, the, the home for the ninety days during this period for Pegasus, um, and the money that was designated for renovations to the nonprofit center, what is to be done for those, uh, for the home and the monies designated?
I can speak for the board here because the board at its emergency meeting last week voted to, and there were various words discussed to, to describe this. I did not get my way. The word was used to table all negotiations with Henson Construction, the nonprofit center. Hence, we are not negotiating or discussing any use of or occupancy of the nonprofit center basement area. There will be no further discussion about that expenditure at all until the Pegasus Board chooses to pick it back up. It is, it is tabled.
So, Mr. Maxwell, the proposal I'm hearing is that this will be put on hold, all the money that's sitting out there would be put on hold while interested parties of our community with some vested interest in Pegasus and experience in nonprofit organization comes up with a long-term proposal that doesn't involve the city rolling Pegasus in, or rolling Pegasus into the city. So all this would, there would be time to put up, come up with a more fully thought out plan. Is that your proposal?
May I elaborate on that? I think that you're determined terms of finding those experts is exactly where we need to start. To think we have found them already would be ludicrous. There are people who are out there who have such expertise as we need and you need who have not come forward. And if this is not a clarion call to them, please make it so. That we find and beat the bushes to find people who want to have this type of service continually be provided to the community in a reasonable manner, in a businesslike manner even. But I, I would expand then on the part that this may be, the, the advisory panels' report may be that Pegasus no longer should be a five oh three C. It should be operated by the city of Enid. There are, there are Pegasus-type organizations within the state of Oklahoma which are operated by municipalities.
Harry being one great example, I think.
Closest, yes.
Thank you.
So we're to, wait, we're to believe that no one has come forward and said, I want to be part of this advisory committee? No one has come to you guys and said that to you?
I don't think that's what he suggested.
I'm asking if that's accurate or not.
That's inaccurate.
So you don't know who is going to be part of the committee?
I, I have volunteers so far. But what I'm suggesting that is a part of the resolution here would be that the city be able to veto someone that they do not want on the body. But that we be the one proposing the members of the body. And the city should make some determination of how many.
Ninety days, inadequate amount of time.
It is, your, uh, Mr. Mayor. We've asked that very question today in open meeting in the Pegasus Board.
We've delayed a lot of things in the city, more than ninety days, so that, to me, is not it. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Eddie?
Well, we have a few more here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Allison Davis and Ms. Davis, if you please, uh, give us your address. I have your phone number. If you just give us your address.
Thirteen oh two Veneta in Enid. Hi. It's nice to be here. And thank you guys for your service. I know it's thankless sometimes. Um, I am one of the volunteers that has come forward to, um, help if it's wanted. I was the executive director of Pegasus from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-eight, and I have a background in television production before that. Um, and I just wanted to say a couple of things as you make your decisions. I think the first thing is to remember why and how this community access station was formed back in the nineteen eighties. It was formed as a service to its citizens, and it is a different animal than most nonprofits. It was formed as a quasi nonprofit, a quasi city department. Um, so it's unlike a normal nonprofit out there. It's quasi-city because it is a service that the city decided to provide for its citizens, for the, to give the ability to all the citizens to have access, hence the name, to a medium to communicate with the other citizens. Whether that is to listen and watch what's going on in their city, or to speak out and put a program on that they might want to put together to watch the city council, you know, board of ed, a parade downtown, a church service, a high school football game, whatever. Um, but, but it's a city that the service, that the city, it is a service that the city provides. It's a quasi nonprofit, so there can be that separation between the cities and the local government for free speech, First Amendment. That is what it's all about, and that's how they were, they were formed, so that it's not a government-controlled TV station. Now, you can have one of those. You can just, you know, a lot of the other cities in Oklahoma have done that, and you can certainly do that, but you would probably just have local government programming on it, and that, that will be a decision that you could make. If you do decide to have this volunteer group do an assessment of what, you know, we think from an industry professional's point of view of what the potential for Pegasus could be, you know, there are several of us that are happy to do that. I think for now, you might want to leave it as the nonprofit, the 501(c)(3), because maybe in the end, you would decide to keep it that way. So why dissolve it and then recreate it again? You know, and it's true. We might come back and say, you know, maybe it's not a good idea, but we need to look at it, and we need to look at all the possibilities with technology the way it is. You know, 15 years ago, it was a lot different. Five years ago, it was a lot different than it is today. You've got robotic cameras, you've got cell phones and laptop control rooms and all kinds of things. And so we want to look at that, and, you know, how could we tap into the potential that this resource is and make it the best that it can be? I mean, ideally, that is our goal, is to cast some kind of vision for that over the next few months. So just wanted to say those things, and thank you for your time.
Before you go, just one quick question. So it's not just to look for, look at the options of how Pegasus should exist mechanically as a, as a separate entity or a wing of the city of Enid, or where it should be, but also what technology should be invested in and
Oh, I think so, yes.
and what efficiencies there might be out there?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any others?
Yeah, yes, sir, we have a few more. Carol Still. And I have your data here. Mr. Still, if you'd repeat it for the record.
Reverend Carol Still. My address is 1102 Hillcrest Drive here in Enid, and I wish to speak in support of Pegasus, both as a resident of the city of Enid and also as a representative of an organization that utilizes its services. I think that Pegasus provides us with a excellent service, and also, I would like to suggest, as I've heard several comments here, it seems like most of this deals with cost and benefit analysis, and as, if you will, the manager of a nonprofit organization, I can tell you that you do not always and solely look at benefits as opposed to cost in trying to assess whether that organization is doing its job. There are many other things go in to determining whether a church or another nonprofit is successful, and sometimes those are a little hard to figure out. They're, they're not always black and white. Also, I would like to address something that I heard a few moments ago, and that is that Pegasus has not attempted to seek any outside funding. I know for a fact that two years ago, Pegasus approached local congregations here in Enid and asked them to contribute towards the purchase of new HD equipment. Our congregation did that, and we have given money to Pegasus for that purpose, and I assume that a part of that money makes up the $400,000 that was mentioned earlier. And so one of the questions I have is if the city takes over Pegasus, and I don't mean that in a hostile way, what about those nonprofit organizations that have contributed money to another nonprofit organization that, you know, I'm concerned about the legality of that myself and not being, I'm a preacher, I'm not an attorney, so I can't really address that, but, but it's certainly a question that I have. Selling, recently actually producing our programming for Pegasus, we're not, we're not the most professional, admittedly, but there is, I think there is a benefit that we provide, not only to our church members, many of our folks who are older and cannot, can no longer attend our worship services, they benefit by being able to watch our services on Pegasus, or to watch services offered by other churches, as well as the other programming that Pegasus provides. So I think there's a much more complex issue here than just simply dollars and cents and whether Pegasus is making the best use of that money. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We have one more.
I want to clarify that one issue. It's not in my, in my notes for later, so I want to straighten that out, because that's, again, one of the misconceptions, the issue about the, what's going to happen with that money. This resolution, as proposed, will only bring the money from Pegasus back that has been given to them by the city of Enid. The funds which were contributed from nonprofit to nonprofit for capital fund expenditures such as new equipment will remain with the Pegasus Incorporated nonprofit entity. So the city is not taking money that came from very generous donors like yourself. That money will remain, and that will be up to the board to decide what they want to do with that, give it back, how they want to handle it. So that's a piece of misinformation I want to clarify.
And Diane, I always have trouble with your last name, so indulge me. Diane Levesque?
Diane Levec.
You're right, it does. If I just looked at it, I would see that. Levesque.
Levec, Levec.
Okay. And your phone number?
Don't have one.
All righty. God bless you, then.
All right. My address. My address, 1324 West Oak. I believe I have a neighbor here. And I met some of you earlier this afternoon, and I humbly come before you that and to say that I am not above making a correction when my facts are wrong, and I do make an effort to keep my facts straight. And in the interest of full disclosure, I am a stringer for MSNBC Newsvine. That means I report and I don't get paid for it, basically. Also, I was a Cold Place reporter in 2008 for Huffington Post. Now, what hasn't been covered so far here is where all of this falls under federal jurisdiction, and just the fact of being a 501(c)(3) makes it subject to federal regulation, but being part of a cable media, it falls under the Federal Communications Commission regulations. And I've also discovered in my investigative reporting that this isn't the only organization that goes by the Pegasus acronym. There are others, and it's basically organized, or the intent is to organize like C-SPAN, which is entirely funded by the cable corporation. Now, as I recall, the first time you all started cutting funding for Pegasus was when you thought you wanted to get Southern Link to come in instead of Cox Cable, and you didn't think it was a good idea to hold the cable company responsible for something that cable companies elsewhere in the nation are in fact responsible for. And this is even on the federal level, so I'm pointing that out. Another thing, too, is that you expect performance without paying enough for it. Now, if you have a problem with somebody absconding with funds that you are giving Pegasus, that's something you should prove, prove in court, and by all means prosecute that person. But if someone is not illegally doing that, they are in fact conforming to the budget that they have, and you're basically demanding a dollar song and putting only a nickel in. If you want a dollar song, you put a dollar in, and that's my point right there. But should the city actually be doing this? According to what I've seen from the federal perspective, no. This is the cable company's responsibility, and all of you have been cowardly to approach Southern Link with this, and they are apparently not hurting because they are in fact charging their customers for Pegasus subsidies. It's not like it's coming out of their pocket. It's coming out of the pocket of the people who put all of you in office. Okay? Now, those are the facts that I've found. I've also found that, well, part of my problem earlier today was the fact that I read in Enid News and Eagle, and I misread it or something, but there's another part of what I read in today's Eagle was somebody got really riled up there about some letter that Wendy Quarles had sent out to churches. Now, again, from the federal regulatory perspective, Wendy Quarles is right, not only when she wrote that letter showing that if the city takes it over, there is a prohibition about running anything having to do with churches or religion or forwarding a particular theology. Okay? You would not be able to do that. All these good churches who have enjoyed Wendy's hospitality over these years have done so because she's Wendy and because the city, all the city did was give money. They are independent. They are intended to be independent, and you would not have church access were this not the case. And if Wendy Quarles was so incompetent, why did she keep Pegasus in perfect compliance with federal regulation all these years? And I submit to you that her letter was also an effort to do that. Wendy Quarles is fully competent and rises to a level of federal competency in knowledge and regu, of federal regulations. And whoever on this commission had a problem with that letter does not rise to the competence required by federal regulation to run such an organization. Okay? And there's something else that I found really peculiar in looking into this when I, after the meeting this afternoon, I had a look at the agenda, and I saw on the agenda the text of the resolution that had a place for Mr. Shuey to sign, and it was stated that he would sign it on this day in January night, January 21, 19, 2014. And from the statement of Mr. Van Hooser right here, prior to anybody making a comment, he did say that he was going to go ahead and approve that. And I find that curious that this is such a blatant disregard of a proper public hearing and a proper withholding of judgment until all people were heard. Now, the, the problem with the date on that resolution is, I'm, I'm bad with Latin, but the term ex post facto comes to mind, and I confess I'm not a lawyer, and that's why I can promise you to get my facts straight. I'm going to ask the Oklahoma State's Attorney about how that's supposed to be, if that's kosher, or, just, just to get a reaction and report on that. Any questions?
Thank you.
That's all the speakers we have, Mr. Mayor.
David?
All right, grab your shorts, because part of what I'm going to go through here is going to be a beating. But I need to do this to make a point. I need to address some of the issues that have been brought up, both by the community and also by Mr. Maxwell, and some issues that were raised at the Pegasus Board meeting today, which I did attend. Specifically, that this is, there's been no continuity, that this is a brand-new issue. Suddenly, we have created this idea that we're not happy for Pegasus, and address the issue of them needing more time, and address the issues of no warnings. And then I have been making some notes about some specific failures that, that caught me off guard a little bit, Commissioner Azell, but I have some here, having studied this and, and give us a starting point there. So I've looked at, thanks to the staff for providing it for me, but I've looked at the last 10 years of minutes from this commission, and I want to give you some perspective, and these are obviously random comments that are through here, so that's why I say, just bear with me. In July of 2003, Item 14 dealt with Pegasus funding, Wendy said that the ability to make money on memberships was hard to do, grants were very limited. Bill Gamble, city manager at the time, said, well, how about creating a partnership with a large company? August of 2003, the contract award for the equipment was brought up. The background for that said there's a need to replace outdated, failing, and non-functional equipment for Pegasus. In the minutes of the meeting, the motion was made by Commissioner Rose to table that item. Seven to zero, it was kicked down the road. Comments in that discussion from Bill Gamble said, how much Pegasus does this community really need? This is in 2003. Wendy Quarles said that a 50% cut in funding is scary. We'll have to cut hours, reduce services. It's very difficult to sell sponsorships. The original purpose of the franchise fee was public access. Hiram Champlin, who was at the meeting, said that it was never intended for the city to fund Pegasus 100%. Carol Eamon, the attorney at the time, said franchise funds can be used for anything. Those are for leasing the right-of-way, and there's no requirement to fund Pegasus with those monies. September of '03, contract from Pegasus, again, discussed. Background, several meetings were held with Pegasus reps to negotiate a compromise on their funding. This resulted in a reduction of 5% per year until 60% of the franchise fee was to be reached. At a special meeting that same year in 2004, Wendy Quarles said she's planning to increase membership by 100% and trying to make Pegasus self-sufficient. Bill Gamble again said, Pegasus's proposal for funding seems excessive based on their history. June of 2005, study session, discuss the Pegasus contract for the year 2005 to '06, Wendy Quarles asked that the franchise fee be frozen at 70%. She stated the labor union was going to start using Pegasus. She agreed they needed to do more fundraising. She stated the major purpose was not entertainment. City manager Jerry Irwin at the time asked the commission to consider continuing to reduce the fee 5% annually. June of 2006, again, a discussion was held on Item 9.1, Contract for Pegasus. Concerns were voiced regarding the amount of funding for Pegasus for the year 2006 to '07. The motion was made by Commissioner Hodgins, seconded by Commissioner Kaufman, to table the item once again. The discussion that year, Commissioner Rudy. Last year, they were asked to seek more donations and did not. Wendy Quarles, we're trying to raise money to be more accountable in the future. Commissioner Hodgman, table approved. July of '06, discuss the Pegasus contract. Commissioner Geng, in the past, we paid on a percentage. Now we have an offer from Pegasus to pay them a lump sum per year of $295,000. Commissioner Rose agreed. It makes sense to set a budget and ask Pegasus to live within that budget. May of 2007, again, budget discussion, special session. Commissioner Rudy said, Pegasus, increase the amount of cuts. It doesn't generate any benefit. Commissioner Dillon, cut completely out. Commissioner Rudy, there's been no grant activity for these funds. The city should not be the sole provider for Pegasus. Commissioner Rudy stated that the $100,000 cut for Pegasus should remain. June of 2007, Commissioner Benson, now on the scene, proposed a budget cut which included $100,000 less for Pegasus. And again, the discussion was held regarding funding cuts for Pegasus. In that same meeting, Wendy said, we're trying to, we're attempting to raise revenue. We're trying to go to HD services, but we're going to need more money. We just had our first class with NOC. Our outreach is now involving schools. Pegasus is now an agency of service, created by and for the city as its number-one priority. Eric Benson reported at that meeting that over the last 10 years, up through 2007, Pegasus had received $3.046 million in support from the city of Enid, and the commission was unhappy. May of 2008, Commissioner Rudy. 2009, Pegasus is going to have to change equipment. Mr. Benson, we'll look at their reserve fund as a source. June of 2008, Wendy said, well, we're looking at more fundraising and more outreach. June of 2009, Wendy, by 2012, we will complete the HD upgrade, but we're going to need more money. September of '09, Contract with Pegasus, the city of Enid continued to pay $185,000 annually. May of 2010, Study Session, Wendy said, well, we're going to remain in standard definition format. We're still going to move towards HD equipment. We're going to eliminate Studio B. We're going to continue our fundraising efforts. We're going to continue to try to sell sponsorships. We're going to do video for pay. We're going to try to increase our sales, and we're going to provide the video service to the Regional Development Alliance. May of 2010, at a special meeting, discussion was held regarding the proposed program funding cuts for Pegasus of $185,000. Commissioner Rose expect, expressed concerns with respect to Pegasus's declining, declining fund balances over the year. Wendy said, we are looking at cutting a staff person since 60% of our budget is personnel. Mayor Criner stated that they needed to tighten up and trim expenses. Wendy said, we plan to get more sponsors, and we've discontinued several programs. Commissioner Rose, Pegasus's current trend cannot survive. Commissioner Geng, Pegasus needs to change its business as the commission changes. Wendy said, well, let's consider it a quality-of-life issue. Commissioner Rose questioned, what won't you be able to do if we fund you at $185,000? Wendy said, we'll have to cut back on staff. Commissioner Geng said, well, maybe sacrifice is the way to go. The people who benefit from the service should pay for it. May of 2011, Special Meeting, Gerald Gilbert, significant changes in the general budget for local programming were discussed. Hearing of 2011, Wendy said, we're planning again for a complete HD upgrade. May of 2013, Commissioner Van Hooser questions the need for Pegasus, stating it should be self-sustaining or be cut. In June 23rd meeting, motion was made by Commissioner Azell to continue funding Pegasus operational costs at $185,000, to fund relocation costs in the amount of $240,000 and to eliminate costs at $185,000, to fund relocation costs in the amount of $240,000, and to eliminate funding for high-definition and digital equipment upgrades in the amount of $67,000, which passed. I'm aware that was a long review, but here's the point. The issue of what to do with Pegasus has been plaguing this commission for at least 10 years. The commissioners have slowly been cutting funding from Pegasus somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000, down to its current level of $185,000, and this has been done, in my opinion, due to a clear lack of performance and lack of satisfaction with the product that they've been delivering. Pegasus has been talking about more fundraising, more sponsors, better equipment, HD upgrades for years, and where are we today? Standard broadcast. Item 8.4 on the agenda specifically. My proposal will not be the end of public-access television, but a new beginning. There's nothing in this proposal that shuts off the three TV channels or limits public access to showing the programs that you want to see. Church programs, exercise programs, the Community Bulletin Board, all of that will continue until this commission, your elected officials, decide otherwise. What my proposal does is stops the bleeding of taxpayer dollars. It puts a stop to the $240,000 expenditure for an unneeded studio, as recommended by the same professionals that I have talked to, who have volunteered their time to help us with this. It gets rid of the completely ineffective current Pegasus structure, which for 10 years has not delivered on its promises to this public. Temporarily, it puts the program under the City of Enid's Public Relations Department. But within three to four months, I fully plan to be back here at this commission in conjunction with a Citizens Advisory Board of Professionals, proposing a whole-new plan. There have been lots of good ideas put out, both by the commission as well as the public, such as contracting the entire service house to a private entity. We don't have to buy equipment, we don't have to buy a studio, we let the private sector do it, and we ask them to do exactly what we want them to do. There are many, many options that we can deal with. So, in conclusion, tonight, let's finally be the commission that takes this issue of Pegasus and deals with it, so we can move on to other issues, to more funding issues, and things that are important to our community's future. Now, let me address specifically the issue of failures. Number one failure, they've not kept up with current media trends. The website is completely behind. If any of you've looked at that lately, the current programming on Pegasus is for the December 2nd to December 9 programming. Number two, no new ideas for programming have been submitted to this commission, proposed to the public, listed anywhere. We have the same channels, the same programs that have been there for months. You pull the programming, what's on Pegasus, and you can get a very good idea of what things they're showing. Additionally, no new funds have been created. We've been hearing about fundraising for all this time, there's about $400,000 in that multiple accounts, and that's what it's been. Next, we still are NSD format. We have still not, we have been promised for years that we're going to upgrade to high-definition, and we're still in standard-definition. Additionally, they've failed to promote and achieve new members. Evidence of this, the November board meeting, the total number of new members for 2013 has been 11. And finally, among others, the programming response to this city's users, the city itself, has been unsatisfactory, from what I understand. And Eric, I'd like you to address that particular issue, if you would. We have not been getting the service out of Pegasus that even the city desires, and it's the major funder and the major responsibility of the city per contract.
I'd be happy to, Commissioner. The first five tenants of the charter that serves the community vis-à-vis the responsibilities of Pegasus directly relate to their service and response to the City of Enid. Short of the transmissions that you see here, internally, we have, in the past 12 months, created 59 different video broadcasts. And I spend far too much time placating my staff who come to me and say, "Why won't Pegasus cooperate? Why won't they respond? And why won't they give us the priority over the garden club or the, or name your club?" I have been here for seven years, and just as you've stated, this has long been an irritant, and it keeps getting kicked down the road. And frankly, I've given up on it the last three years, and I place it in the category of, "I can't fix it, and no one will help." I applaud this commission's willingness to address what is a giant elephant in the room. Pegasus, in its current operation, does not serve its financial master. Its response is completely unsatisfactory, it is not timely, and I am completely dissatisfied with it. Now, I suppose I should have been the evil person that addressed the board and threw stones at them, but as I said, I just got tired of beating my head against that wall. We can do much better. You deserve much better, and this council is willing to spend the money to provide that service.
Well, Eric, don't you think it's a little bit hypocritical to limit their funding, giving them two staff positions, demand this huge amount from them? 59 productions, you've said? That's a lot of time, that's a lot of effort, and...
I think, don't misunderstand me, Commissioner, my staff did that.
Not them.
Not Pegasus. My staff produced those.
My understanding is that your staff is monopolizing virtually all of the production managers' time at Pegasus as it is, much less them trying to do anything else.
We're the only people they have a contract with.
I refer to their charter. That is their primary responsibility.
And it sounds like they are fulfilling that primary responsibility within the bounds of the limited staff funding that we give them.
No, you are absolutely wrong about that, Commissioner. They're not responding. If it were not for my Public Relations Director spending every day trying to manage this issue, it would not happen. And I have expressed my dissatisfaction with Wendy, and I have told her more than once that I want to have the priority that our contract has directed. It is up to you now. If you want to continue to kick this can down the road...
Well, Eric, do you think that...
Well, let me finish, Commissioner, and then I'll shut up. If you want to continue to kick this can down the road, you're not going to get any response from me. I'm used to it. This staff is sick to death of this issue. There's so much that could be done if we simply decided we could change horses.
But Eric, what you are...
But if you want to keep it that way, vote that way tonight.
You just equated City of Enid Public Relations with government access. You're right, the wording is that the primary goal should be government access, but is that the same as getting our, sit down with Tammy and talk about all the wonderful stuff Enid's doing? I mean, government access is this, it's filming us tonight. That's what government access is, and you're right, that is Pegasus's top goal. But their top goal, but filming the city commission meetings is not the same thing as facilitating Steve Keim's review of our new dump trucks. I mean, it's, that's great, and I love that we have this active Public Relations Director, but don't equate government access and public relations. Those are two entirely different things.
Well, can you name me one program that reflects the best interests of Enid that has not been originated by my staff?
Eric, the goal of Pegasus is not program generation, it's public access.
But there's nobody accessing it, so...
Then vote your conscience, Commissioner.
The second point, the other point I'd like to make before I'll also take my turn and shut up, is that, David, every one of those minutes you mentioned was done in a budget session, in the annual budget review, and Pegasus has been constantly cut and cut and cut.
Because they don't do their job, and they don't do their job.
We cut enormous amounts out of Pegasus, and we're asking them to do more. HD upgrade wasn't exactly an overnight thing, and as Mr. Maxwell so well-stated, it's getting cheaper. So, that money, that $400,000 that did largely come from us, that they have been saving up, $400,000 in HD equipment's going to go a lot farther today than it would have three years ago. We have a proposal on the table to take some time with these lovely people with lots of knowledge, who have stepped up well past time, but have finally stepped up and want to devote their time into rethinking this. I think we should give them the opportunity to do so, and I think we should vote down your motion and vote a second resolution allowing Pegasus 90 days with an advisory board to reshape them. And if they haven't done it by then, then forget it, let's cut it. But I don't think we should lose what is there without giving just 90 days to re-explore it.
Define what is there? I mean, what are you, what are we, what are we losing?
We're losing the organization that's there. We're losing the people that are there.
Oh, no.
I'm not talking about the staff, excuse me. I'm talking about the Board of Directors, I'm talking about the institutional knowledge. Well, but a Pegasus Board of Directors would still technically exist but have no assets and no purpose.
They have $400,000 in their bank account.
Well, actually, most of that would come back to us at that point. Only the money that was, that they raised from individual donors, donors would remain in their bank account.
Are you saying to let the Board of Directors do their job for 90 more days?
That's right. That's exactly what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor.
I have one comment to make in regard to some of the other comments that have been made, and this is kind of, this to me should be a red flag to the Board of Pegasus. The fact that, I know that Eric has visited with Pegasus leadership, I have visited with Pegasus leadership, don't shake your head at me, I have the email that says it, Wendy. The fact of the matter is that your Board, if your Board doesn't know what you've been told, you, the Board is saying that they've never heard this before, and to me, that is a failure of the person who has been told that to communicate that to them. I'm really kind of shocked and amazed that your Board doesn't know any of this information that we've all shared. This is not new to us, so I'm really shocked at why it's new to the Board all of a sudden. Because you guys act like this is all new, and you've just now heard this in the last two weeks. And I know that it's been relayed way beyond that, so I'm just kind of confused as to why that has happened, why that hasn't been communicated to the Board. And that's all I, and that's all I have to say about that.
I have a question, if I may. Assuming this resolution's adopted, what is the plan for relocating Pegasus? Obviously, it's felt that it shouldn't be in the nonprofit center, so do we have another location in mind?
That was one opinion to not relocate it there. It's not unanimous.
Well, actually, I mean, I do have a plan, yes. There's not any part of this I haven't tried to think through. And the idea, I mean, we're leasing space at the nonprofit right now, it's not ideal space, in fact, it's probably terrible space, but it's allowing them to function and provide the same television programming and access to our religious groups and so forth that it always has. And so, my thought process is very simple. We've got fairly cheap rent over there now, we just continue that for three or months, three or four more months, like we have been doing, and we do exactly, we're going to take 90 days and look at this. This is not a, my proposal doesn't mean that this is done, we're finished with it. We're going to tap those same people. There are several people that I've gotten to know on the Pegasus Board who are experts in the media arena, and I think they should be a part of this advisory board, media advisory group, whatever you want to call it, that this commission appoints to decide which direction we should go. So, this isn't an either-or on, are we going to study this? Are we going to look in a new direction? Are we going to go forward? I fully intend for us to go forward and do what this commission thinks the public wants. The difference, the difference when it boils right down to it is, what we're voting on is who's going to do that? Whether we're going to let the Pegasus Board continue to do status quo, even with a new warning? I say they've been warned multiple times. I think this is continued failure, and I'm not faulting the individual members of the current Board, and I told them that today at the meeting. This is a leadership problem, this is a group problem, this is a direction problem, and I'm not, I'm not willing to let them continue to do the same thing going forward. I want a new direction, let's change this, I beg you all, let's make a new beginning here, and let's go forward. It's going to be better for the city on the other side. Nobody's going to see any difference on the short term, and on the long term, it can be nothing but better.
But David, if we let them do it, then we don't, we are not breaching a contract, and we're not opening the city up for litigation. If there are two ways to do this review, then let's do it the way that's keeping the promise we made.
Well, I'm not going to debate law with you, but I just gave you five reasons there in breach of that contract. We didn't breach it, they did, Ben. And if the sewer plant, if we promised $500,000 to a contractor that's building the sewer plant, but there's sewage running out the back of it, are we going to continue to fund them because we feel bad for them?
No.
I mean, we're not, Ben, really. We're going to modify that contract, we're going to make a change midstream, in the middle of the budget process, even after we signed a contract with them. We're not going to continue to let sewage run out on the street. Well, in this case, it's okay to make a change.
A bit extreme, but I get your message.
I toned it way down.
I still don't think we have grounds for cause, I still don't think we demonstrated cause, and I still think that we would be breaching the contract, but...
Well, I think that's what lawyers make their money doing, and our city council has advised us that, that she thinks we're in pretty good grounds.
Actually, she said there was potential liability, but the damages would be...
You know, you can sue me because you don't agree with me. You can sue for hot coffee poured in your lap these days, but this, so let them sue. I don't think there's grounds, and what's going to happen on the other side of that? It's going to take two years to get through the court system.
I'm not saying it's going to happen.
And we will have unfunded Pegasus, and we will have already provided a beautiful service for this community by the time that happens, so let them sue.
Andrew is right, it's not likely.
These board members don't want to go to court against the city. That's just not going to happen.
So, just for clarification, under your resolution, the programming that is currently on there, the church, the, everything as it is, if somebody was not listening to this, would they notice tomorrow, or a month from now, or two months from now, if there's a difference? I think there's a lot of misinformation that we're going to pull church services off, we're going to, it's going to become a propaganda machine, that's a load. But is anybody going to even notice? I mean...
It is my, it is my specific goal, Mike, that the city will not, when this fades away, and it's not in the paper next week, when this fades away, people who turn on their television and look at Pegasus are going to see the same things that they've been seeing until this body right here says, "That's not what we want to do anymore."
And the second thing is the volunteer committee of experts. Mr. Maxwell said that they would be appointed by that Board, you know, if, obviously, if this resolution passes, we'd probably be appointed by this Board, but the, and who are they answering to? And, you know, how are they, you know, what does that makeup look like? And are they going to work whether this passes or not? I mean, are they going to move to this? Because I know that it's been expressed that maybe they would want this, Pegasus to stay intact and work with Pegasus versus working with this Board, so, which is better?
Well, I don't want to get into a he-said, she-said on that, but the members of the public that I've talked to that are willing to help have not stated to me that this is conditional upon Pegasus staying in its shape. In fact, I talked to most of them even before we started having the conversations ourselves. So, I'm very confident that those people are interested in improving, in improving the community, not taking sides on whether it's Pegasus or not. And I'm very confident that we'll find that, I don't know if it's appropriate to use the example of the park boards and the advisory boards that we already have, but I kind of see it on that level. They can get together and they can deliberate, we can have, I suggested seven members, I'm open to consideration of changes there. One Steve Keim to go because he'll be directly involved, and one of us, not me, one of you all, go to that, and five public members. It can be a couple of Pegasus Board members, and it can be some new people. And come back to this commission in the future with a recommendation for what to do, and we can take it or leave it, just like we do the park board, and just like we do the Arts Council, and, I mean, the Visual Arts Council's going to make recommendations to us, and then we'll go forward. So, I think it's a very workable way to get the public involved in telling us what they want, and then we can listen and do what is appropriate.
The last point of this is, you've, you know, you say three or four months. Do we have a specific, you know, like a 90-day deadline or something like that? I think would be a little easier to, to, you know, to stomach, I think.
Well, my thought process was, and, you know, our budget negotiations, I've only done this once, and I've had the chance to do it twice, I've only done it once, but it seems that that occurs about in May and June and make the decisions, funding. So, in my mind, I would very much like to see that recommendations back before we decide what we're going to fund and how. We could decide to throw a half a million dollars at this project.
90 days.
I don't know what they say, I don't know. So, 90 days would be fine.
90 days from today is April the 22nd.
So, we give them 90 to 120 days, and we'll still be within our ability to discuss it at the, I don't want to drag this out of gear by any means, I mean seriously, this budget side.
I think we need to let them do their, do their job.
I'd like to have it resolved before the budget meetings.
April the 22nd, it's long before we get into the budget.
I'm completely open to that.
When do we get in the budget, Gerald?
I want this to move forward, I'm completely...
Timeframes, we've been talking about it, May-June timeframe. We'll be working on it.
It's eight days, it's eight days after April the 22nd, when they say they will have their work done. Is what's on 8.4 verbatim what your motion is, David? We've talked about a lot of things.
We have, and I want to be sure we incorporate everyone's wishes. I think as it sits, really, I've left the Public Advisory Board open. City Manager's in 30 days going to tell us whether, what the best lease options would be, if that space currently in Pegasus is not the best, and the event center would go, we need that recommendation, we have a deadline on that. I think we've taken care of Wendy, because she, if she doesn't have a job, which I envision after this is, this is approved, I think Steve Keim can run this, the budget money will come back to us. As I told the Board today, there's some outstanding bills that Pegasus has involved with the relocation. We take care of that, we're not just throwing them to the wolves. We'll take care of the bills, we approved eleven-thousand dollars of relocation expenses tonight already, so we're already down to two-hundred-and-twenty-nine.
It's twenty-five thousand dollars that we're on hook for, Commissioner.
So we've got some money out there that we need to take care of, so I think we can make it very clean. February first comes up really quick, but, you know, if we're going to do this, let's just do it and go on with it. I guarantee the public's not going to see a difference, and we're going to be better off on the other side of this. Any other questions for me? I've tried to say it every way I can say it.
I think the biggest thing that's got turned around is, we're not killing Pegasus. It's going on. All calls I get is, it's not going to be here no more. That's as far as from the truth as can be. We're going to have it, we're just going to make it better. I think if you give us time, we can make it a lot better.
Well, a point that was made earlier was that, you know, you hear that the public likes it, and they don't want us to do anything, all that, and I understand all of that with the, however, we're the ones that have the contract with them, and we're the ones that are paying that. I mean, you know, we're paying that money out, and they have a duty to fulfill that. And so I understand that people like it, and it's a feel-good thing and all that, but it has to make sense at some point, and it hasn't made sense for a very long time.
And they can still improve. If we vote no on this vote, then there's still an opportunity.
But the thing is, is they've been saying for ten years that they're going to improve.
If we vote no on this vote, Tammy, there is still an opportunity.
There's been an opportunity for ten years.
And there's another.
And I'm not giving them another.
And I know, I know, but I'm saying there's still an opportunity to, instead of the city doing that, city taking that and looking at all this, that the Pegasus still has one last chance, ninety days to do it themselves.
What I hear, and I hope I understand this, is that we're being promised that we're going to get a lot better product for a lot lower cost. Is that, is that what we're being told?
That is my goal, yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't know if we would even argue the money if the product was better.
Well, you know, there, again, I heard a lot, I've heard a lot of talk about the money, but I've never heard much talk about the product, other than that they don't like, they, they, probably, you know, no specifics.
Mr. Maxwell actually...
I'll go with you on that.
Mr. Maxwell actually admitted that they're not doing a good enough job.
I'll repeat what...
I mean, you know, you think it can always be better, we could do a better job. I'm not going to say that we're the best city commissioners ever been.
I will repeat what I said earlier. What does Bartleville, Stillwater, and Norman know that we do not know?
They've made this change already.
And I think ninety days, I could call those three cities, but I'm not going to do it, that's not my job. That's the board of directors of Pegasus's job. Any other questions, comments? Have you got the motion? Please cast your vote. Motion carries four-three. Item eight-point-five, consider a resolution supporting House Bill eighteen-seventy-five regarding sales and use tax retention fees charged to cities, towns, and counties by the Oklahoma Tax Commission. Joan is not here. I will explain to you what I understand. The retention fee is what the Oklahoma Tax Commission charges us or withholds from us for handling the sales tax, the different use taxes that are paid to the Oklahoma Tax Commission. We pay one percent. The bill before the state legislature, that it was too late last year to be brought up this year, and they're hoping to have that in the session earlier, earlier this year. The amount of what it will save the City of Enid having to pay the Oklahoma Tax Commission is one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars a year. And that's going up every time, every time you see that sales tax increase at one-sixty-five. One-sixty-five is the... But...
I'll second the motion.
Another comment?
We're with you, Mayor.
It's been a long day, and it's going to be a lot longer.
I hope not a lot longer.
For me. I can't speak for anyone else. There, the Oklahoma Municipal League is wanting us to approve the resolution to consolidate with the other municipalities in the state of Oklahoma. Who made the motion?
I think it's a great deal.
Second by Ron. Further discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven-zero, and we need to...
Move to approve consent items?
Second.
Yeah, the second by Ron. Further discussion? Please cast your vote.
Just, uh...
Motion carries seven-zero.
Just one quick, on the garbage truck, was that a front loader? Or, I mean, the, for the commercial dumpsters, or is that a side loader? Front end, there it is, okay.
It's a front loader.
For the commercial dumpsters, okay.
We will now recess to convene as the Enid Municipal Authority. Item number eleven, all the trustees of the Enid Municipal Authority are in attendance. Item twelve, Enid Municipal Authority Regular Meeting is in sessions. Item twelve-point-one, award the purchase of one front-end loading forty-four-yard compaction, compaction body trash truck for the Public Works Department.
Move to approve? Second.
By Ben, second by Mike. Further discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven-zero. Item twelve-point-two, approval of claims in the amount of eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-two dollars and nineteen cents.
Make a motion approved.
Motion by Rodney.
Second.
Second by Mike. Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven-zero. We will now adjourn to convene as the Enid Economic Development Authority. Item fourteen, the trustees of the Enid Economic Development Authority Regular Meeting are all in attendance, all seven of us. Item fifteen, the Enid Economic Development Authority Regular Meeting, item fifteen-point-one, approval of claims in the amount of three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and forty-one cents.
Make a motion approved.
Motion by Rodney.
Second.
Second by Ben. Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven-zero. We will now adjourn to reconvene as the Enid City Commission. Any other sign-ups for the public discussion, Eric?
Sure.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
By Rodney.
Second.
Please cast your vote. Motion carries seven-zero.